Deloitte of Salado, Regal Board of Alderman Meeting, Salado Municipal Building 301, North Stagecoach, Salado, Texas, July 18, 2019, 6:31 PM. This is a call to honor City Secretary, please. Here. Bow our heads for prayer, please. Lord, we give you thanks for all the things that you have given us in this life, especially for health and for joy and for freedom. We're living in difficult times when things seem one way and behind the scenes there are another way. We pray today for what has happened between America and Iran. And we ask, Lord, that this not get into a major, major confrontation. May there be cool thinking and an understanding that this world does not need that kind of a conflict. We pray for our armed services, wherever they are and whatever they're doing, and their families that are holding things together back home. We pray for our Congress and our President, and we ask, Lord, that common sense will prevail. We pray for those places in our country that are suffering from a great heat wave. We ask that you be with them. We pray, Lord, even for rain, even though we have had a lot of rain this year, we still pray for more rain. And we ask, Lord, that you will be with our little village, our town, that you will help us understand and to work through very critical and serious times and making sure we're doing it right. We ask for six doses of wisdom and an awful, awful lot of patience and much, much clear thinking. We pray for our Aldermen who are not here. We pray for their safe return. We pray for those in our community who are sick and those who have lost loved ones, and we ask that you be with them. Lord, I know I've asked a lot of things, piled a lot of things on your plate, but these are things that need attention. And if you can do all the things that you've done in the past, then we put it on your plate and ask for your assistance. Be with us tonight. In your name I pray. Amen. Let us stand by the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. We have those citizens' communications tonight.
I'm there.
I do?
Yes.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Would you please, we need to get you that microphone.
What am I gonna do?
Sir, I need for you to say your name and your address.
My name is...
And then you will have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Kerry Hayes. I've been here about 22 years now and just declare, my mom that used to back in the 90s before 9/11 was Sir Wigglesworth. I did want to let you guys know because I like to have this place to be sound as economically as possible because at one time it used to be a boomtown. And we're having trouble right now, but we have the Lord. And that's all I need to say today.
Thank you so much, Kerry. Thank you. Go to number two, the consent agenda. Number A, approval of minutes of the Special Board of Alderman Meeting of July the 3rd, 2019. And up number B, letter B, approval of June 2019 financial statements for the Village of Salado. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion's been made and seconded. Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand. Good afternoon, Don. How are you?
Doing well, sir. Mayor, members of the board, members of the public, let me run through just a few items very quickly, try to be brief as possible. Status report on the wastewater project. We're running out of about 39% mark as far as the number of properties in the service area that have made payments or are on their way to connecting to the wastewater system. So the numbers are continuing to grow, a lot of activity out there right now, as you can see driving Main Street. Salado ISD has started the process of connecting the district's properties on Williams Road and Salado School Road to the wastewater system. That process is well underway, ahead of schedule, by the way. They were talking about an August connection, but they'll be there before that. Talked right away with the developer on Royal Street about completing the extension of the wastewater service to the property while the property owner, the developer, is out of town on deployment with the military. He and his representatives aren't communicating with us. Updating cost estimates, right now we are for the extension of wastewater service to the library, Brooks and Brothers, Sonic, Fairway Golf, Convenience Store, and Rock Creek Properties. Rock Creek is a new one we're looking at as we've received some interest from the properties down on Rock Creek. As you know, right now the line is on Main Street and those properties that are at Rock Creek and Main Street, such as Solace Gallery and such, are required to connect. We've had some interest from the properties down on Rock Creek about possibility of getting that service extended to them. So we're working up some cost estimates to entertain discussions. There may be an opportunity in there to actually save some money for the property owners in that situation. Right now, for example, the Barton House is supposed to connect all the way and come all the way up to the main street, but for some reason they're able to pay for funding potentially that extension down Rock Creek. You would eliminate that one single long extension, the cost could be shared among the various property owners after that extension. So it's a possibility. No one says it's gonna happen right now, but we're running some numbers to sit down and talk with people. Also working on the development of a wastewater debt restructuring plan that we'll be presenting to the board. Status report on sales tax collections. The July 2019 sales tax check is in, again representing May 2019 sales. The numbers continue to climb, the total $37,956.84. That's up about 9.7% than the July 2018 check. The July 2019 check was the largest July check in the history of the village. Fiscal year-to-date sales tax collection totaled some $432,000, almost $433,000. That's up about 14% from the same time last year. And fiscal year-to-date, our sales tax collections have surpassed our budget estimate. We right now are at about 106% of fiscal year 2019 sales tax revenue budget, and that's at the 83% mark of the fiscal year. The picture's also looking good as far as mixed beverage tax collections go. The third quarter of 2019 mixed beverage tax check is in, representing the April, May, June sales, and it totaled some $6,125, up about 30% the third quarter 2018. The third quarter 2019 check was the third largest quarterly check in the history of the city. Fiscal year-to-date, mixed beverage tax collections totaled $21,440, up about 29% from the same period last year. Fiscal year-to-date, mixed beverage tax collections represent about 119% of the budgeted amount for fiscal year 2019. So those numbers also are looking promising. Main Street project continues. As you know, if you've driven downtown, capital excavation crews are working long days and they're doing that to try to get as much done as they can before fall and weather starts to settle in. They right now are on the west side of Main Street, just north of Face Park Road, installing drainage pipe. The good news is that they're getting out of the rock, and I think they're very pleased with that. The rock had a tendency to slow them down, as it did with us on the wastewater project when we were installing. Their challenge now at this stage of the game is dealing with a very narrow band of right-of-way that they're having to put pipe in. It'd be interesting watching that excavator work its way up along that bank and that oak tree that perches over Main Street, but they feel comfortable they can do that without causing any type of damage to that tree. That's good news. Just a reminder, if you're driving in that area, they're closing lanes, not full closures, but periodic lane closures. You need to obey the flagman and know that the police department is out working traffic enforcement in that area. If you know this project involves installation of drainage pipe sidewalks, decorative streetlighting, and parking improvements, the full length of Main Street should be done by this time next year, let's hope. Status report on the school resource officer program. Earlier this week, the Salado ISD school board unanimously approved interlocal agreement with the village establishing the school resource officer program. It's exciting news. The village is accepting applications for the school resource officer position now. The Salado ISD will be participating in hiring process, but as we discussed at the last meeting, the chief of police will have the final decision on who's hired. The chief of police will be the supervising individual for that particular officer and the organizer, commander of that program. The cost of the officer will be shared by the Salado ISD and the village. Status report on the sanctuary development. Developers have submitted a construction plat for development of more than 300 residential projects. We all know that. We've completed our initial status review of that particular plat. They've developed some 94 comments as far as the modifications, adjustments, compliance issues that need to be addressed in that particular document. We met this afternoon for about two and a half hours going over the resubmission, and it looks like they addressed most of those comments, about 90% of those. They still have about 10% more to be addressed. Once everything is in order and all of the issues have been addressed, we, of course, will bring that to the board with consideration. You're basically gonna be approving a construction plat, and if it complies with the regulations of development agreement and the ordinance, there's really not much you can do but greenlight it from that standpoint. They're not asking for any variances at this stage of the game other than those that were granted in the development agreement itself. Our target date for presentation of the construction plan to this board is gonna be the August 18th meeting, the second meeting in August, so you may want to mark your calendars on that. You know, the development agreement in its entirety will be available on the city's website. We're gonna try to get that up next week. We hope to have some time this week, but we got pushed behind on some other issues. So I'll be looking for that. But the plat itself, we have asked for them to produce a separate executive summary of the various lot sizes in the subdivision, but also various home types. They're down to that point where they can actually tell you how many of the certain type of homes, but they will do that, and we will post all of that online once we have that information. We hope to get the final piece of that information tomorrow, if we can prepare a basically page on our site to deal with. And that's all we got, Mayor.
Questions, please, to Don.
I have a question, sir.
Yes, sir.
In the plan that they're gonna produce, are they gonna display any possible businesses that are gonna come in with sanctuary?
No, sir. This is just the residential piece. The development has two parts, has a residential component, and then it has largely a commercial component, but it'll have some mix in residential, too. But this is just the residential piece. This is the 300-plus lots that are gonna be up just catty-corner to the church on Royal Street. The commercial piece, of course, is out on 2268 Wildflower. We do not have any submission at this stage of the game on the commercial.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions, please? Thanks, Tom.
Sure.
Going on now to the presentation of the fiscal year 2020. Watch this word, needs, watch it, for the Village of Salado. Don?
Yes, sir. This is something we started a year or two ago to begin the process of trying to educate and plant the seeds about the actual needs that we have from a staff standpoint to meet the service demands that we face on a daily basis and are expecting to face in the coming days, coming year. We look typically at about a three- to five-year projection period on an annual basis, and we've asked each of the department has to bring forward their actual needs. We caution them, we're not interested in any wish lists, we're not interested in any want lists, we're interested in what they see are the essential needs for this community from a standpoint of trying to deal with growth and the issues that we are encountering on a day-to-day basis. It is not a proposed operating budget, and I will caution the public on that because the numbers you can see are way out left field. But it is meant to try to bring awareness to those issues, to those needs that we really see, you know, as far as needing, to try to address our operational needs for the next three to five years. I'm gonna break this down into several pieces so it's a little bit more easily understood. We start first of all, obviously, with manpower. And again, keep in mind, we're talking about a three- to five-year period with projected growth, but also with existing issues we deal with today. And what we're seeing is from an administrative standpoint, we're looking at the need to add approximately $172,000 in employee costs for an assistant village administrator, also an AT court clerk, assistant court clerk to assistant city secretary, who right now is wearing both hats. Our court activity is picking up. We also need someone to process AP. Right now, that's being done in-house by yours truly, and then from a standpoint of the activity as we begin to bill more wastewater, but also as we, you know, bill more as far as our invoicing goes, as we receive more bills and we need to process, as we have payroll, it's important that we have someone that we can dedicate to that function. And there's no reason that position cannot be shared with a court clerk to help out with court to assistant administrator, as we talked about that as far as the need to walk in traffic at the growth issues, even with just the day-to-day operational issues. Development services, our planning and development department, we're talking about adding one body in that particular area as far as what we need, and that is a code enforcement officer, a full-time code enforcement officer, so we can be more consistent and we can be more regular in our code enforcement effort. Right now, we operate on a complaint-only basis. We don't go out of patrol. And when we get those complaints in or the direction of the board, we try to be proactive in our resolution and see if we can work out a resolution without going through a full-blown enforcement process. As the city grows, there's gonna be a need for maybe some more, not as much complaint-driven code enforcement, but as much more regular code enforcement from that standpoint. I will say this, and this is one thing to think about. Right now, we contract out our building inspection services, and it's possible that you could, you know, with the level of activity we're anticipating in the next three to five years, it's possible that we could, you know, make this a dual position that is building inspection and code enforcement, and let that person wear two hats in that standpoint. But that's about another $58,000 in personnel costs. Public safety, we're talking about adding three more police officers. This is what we will need to bring our level of patrol up to 24/7. Right now, we're able to go, you know, we're able to pull it within probably, you know, 18 hours thereabouts, and we flex those hours so we're not regular, so people don't get used to when we're there and when we're not there. But our feeling is we're reaching that point where we think the service demand for 24 hours is needed. I think there's an expectation that we provide service 24/7. Right now, we lean on the Sheriff's Department and the Constable's Office in those hours when we're not on. The Constable's Office, quite frankly, is off when we're off in a lot of cases. So it's up to the Sheriff's Department. As you know, there's a limited number of sheriff's deputies that patrol this county overnight in those situations. So we felt like it's important to start planning for what it takes, but we think another three officers will be required to bring our levels up to the point where we can provide 24/7. That would be a cost, an additional cost of about $224,000. And I will tell you, these numbers are very consistent with other police departments of that size, nothing out of the ordinary as far as that goes. Public works, we're talking about adding a maintenance foreman to the point that we have two individuals who would be working on the streets, dealing with potholes, dealing with street trimming, dealing with sign repairs, those type of issues. You may ask about mowing, we'll talk about that in just a moment. Capital outlay items, drainage improvement study, we're at a point where we have to start dealing with drainage. This is something that we've not done a lot with since we incorporated, and I think it's important that we move forward with this and not wait for the next flood to get mitigation dollars, but move forward and start planning and looking at our drainage issues that exist. It will be a situation where we will probably want to try to see if we can partner with some of our neighboring entities, be it the county or be it some of our adjacent governments to see if they want to participate to the point that we can broaden the scope of the study. The thing that I would hope this would do is, number one, it would help address some of those immediate and potential future drainage issues that are on the horizon, but also I think what it would do is potentially develop data that could potentially lead to an updating of our FEMA maps, our flood information maps. I think they're old maps. I think, quite frankly, a lot has changed since the data in that map was put together and informed the flood plain and the floodways. I think it's important that we look to update those. We have had discussions with the Texas Water Development Board about the possibility of them coming in to assist, and it actually have received some pretty favorable information as far as the potential availability of some money to help not just Salado, but also to potentially help Bell County, which I think is good, and we'll see how that pans out. But they're aware of our interest in maybe updating those maps. It is not a cheap process. I'm gonna tell you that. It's not a very simple process at all, but the key is you gotta get the baseline study, the baseline data put together before they can begin massaging and working the maps. Wayfinding signage program. We've looked at, well, let me back up, minor drainage improvements. You know, we've budgeted, we've looked at $100,000 in that line, and you say, what type of improvements are we talking about? We're talking about improvements that are lacking. We're talking about looking at the drainage system we're dealing with on Chisholm Trail right now as far as some of those improvements. Some of the culvert consistency is a big issue. On Mill Creek, you know, we just in the last, since in the last 12 months, we've had Mill Creek go under maybe three times, four times, with water coming out of the creek side that's coming across and then blocking traffic, and it's actually trapping some of those people back in there because they can't get across the low water crossing, the single lane sometimes when that happens. They don't have a back escape like some of the folks on Chisholm Trail do when that low water crossing on Chisholm Trail goes under. So our feeling is, you know, there's a need maybe to go in and look for that box culvert and maybe look at sizing that drainage channel that's in that particular area. So this is mainly for the local, what I would call the localized drainage improvements, not the major drainage improvement projects. But we think that's probably about $100,000 a year, to be truth be known. You've got maintenance on these drainage ditches that we have responsibility that we need to start looking at and trying to put some money towards to pay attention to. Wayfinding signage program, we're at a point where we need a real wayfinding signage program. We've survived with a couple of small signs that are not real good shape, you know, but I think that as we attract this or this community, there's an expectation of class, there's an expectation of quality, and we need to help direct people through this place. It will take about $150,000 to do it right. And when I talk about do it right, that means design the signs properly, that means get them placed, and that means make the signs to the point where they will last. And these signs would direct people to public gathering areas, but also potentially to certain businesses in the area. You know, this downtown area has been deemed a cultural district, and there's an expectation that we have boundary signage and also some wayfinding signage within that district. So our thought process is, we would combine this. We'd probably go try to get some money from the Texas Commission on the Arts to help with the construction of some of this program. We've already submitted a grant for design, and we'll see how that goes, but I just wanted to forewarn you, this is a cost that we need to look at. The beautiful thing about our area, our particular area is the core area we're talking about is not gonna grow in its dimensions. It may grow in different types of businesses and such over the years, but what we put in place would be put in place to the point that it could change easily and not costly when changes to occur as far as updating the signs. Codification. Right now, you can go online, look at the website, and you can look all of our ordinances, but what we need to do is we need to take the next step as a village. And the next step as a village is go through the codification process. And what that process entails is it entails basically taking all of the ordinances you have adopted, going through and blending those into a true code book. And it's a code book that would be searchable online by term, by topic, but even more importantly, it's a code book that people could reference, and it cross-references other codes and it makes sure you don't have any conflict or duplication in your codes from the standpoint. It avoids pitfalls in the future. It's something that cities do, and they really need to do from that standpoint. Right now, we operate ordinance by ordinance, you know, and it's just at a point where we need to get in and bleed all those ordinances together, make sure what we have is legal, and I think that's first and foremost important, but also make sure that we have does not conflict with other documents. And that's all part of this codification process. It's about a $12,000 process. And what you'll do is it's not a one-time process, it's also not a repeating $12,000 occurrence. What you do is you get into a maintenance program on your code where once or twice a year you will send in those ordinances that have been adopted, you know, and they get added to the code book and get plugged into the code book. It's just something that I think that most people are used to dealing with, that's something that cities really should be doing. And, you know, we're at that point in our existence in 19 years that we really need to think about. A large format scanner, we had an awful lot of large documents that rolled through this place as far as our plaits go, as far as some of our building plans go and things along those lines. Yes, we are eventually gonna be moving to a digital submission requirement, but not everybody's ready to do that at this stage of the game, and we also have a tremendous volume of large documents that need to be scanned and need to be stored. And we think that for $5,000, $6,000, we can get a large format scanner, and it would be worth the investment. We have the ability to use the COG, but as this COG grows and this community in this area grows, it's something we really need to think about obtaining for ourselves so we're not having to rely on others. Three vehicles is what we're anticipating as far as our capital outlay goes. Two of these would be PD vehicles, and there'd be another vehicle for that code enforcement inspector that we talked about, who could potentially also maybe be a building inspector. That's something to examine and think about. Five computers, the police department laptops that are in the units, the MDTs, mobile data terminals that we call them, they're in need of replacement in the next three to five years. They're already about three and a half years old. Those laptops are competing on a daily basis as they run out of the streets and get pulled in and out. So we've got that. We've also got some additional computers for the staff that we've talked about. A playground at Face Park. The playground we have has met its end from a life standpoint, from a life standpoint. And we think probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about $45,000 would put together a very nice playground at Face Park, and it would be a playground that would be set in modern standards, that would be code compliant, and would be much safer than what we have right now. Two public restrooms. These are for downtown, and what we're thinking is, we're thinking about going the trailer route as opposed to the stick build route. Not from a standpoint of being able to move them and being able to send them different directions, but from the standpoint that the facilities are such now that you have the ability to plant those restroom trailers. The trailers are customized. You can have granite tops in those, you can have air conditioning, you can have heating, you can have music, you can have different types of flooring. You can literally customize those to the point where they're something for people to remember. You can address the facade without problems by putting, you know, skirts, by putting stone, those type of things. If you've been down to the salt-licking Driftwood, their restroom for that facility is actually a restroom trailer, and you'd never know it as you walk into it. But they're pretty economical, certainly more economical than building a stick built. I will tell you, to build a stick built one-holder, it's gonna cost you somewhere in the neighborhood of about probably $60,000. One of these restroom trailers at about $30,000, $40,000, you're gonna get potentially four or five heads in those restrooms and a urinal or two for the men's units. So they're good, and I think the more you dress them up, you weatherize those also. What you do is you simply pull it up and you run it into a cleanup, just like you'd do a tap for a building, and it's very simple and very easy to deal with. You're gonna have to find a water source, and typically what you do in those situations is, if you're not on public property, you've got some type of arrangement with the person whose property the public restroom ends up on as part of whatever lease, property lease you have, you simply plug a hose into them, and that's literally all you do is you tie a hose into them and it fills the service tank. Street improvements, this is something you can even start thinking about. We've talked about this. We've anticipated $5 million as far as a potential bond for street improvements, and the debt service on a 20-year, $5 million street bond would be somewhere near the neighborhood of about $360,000 a year. So that's something to think about. The longer we put streets off, the more expensive they're gonna get and the more disturbing the conditions are gonna get. So we can continue to patch, we can continue to do the chip seal periodically with the county, but at the end of the day, you're at a point where some of your roads actually need to be reconstructed and need asphalt overlays and not just chip seal, especially some of your heavier traveled roadways. So I felt like we needed to be real and put that number before you so you know what you're talking about if you were to look forward to, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of about $5 million for improvements, which I think is pretty close to that number we talked about when we presented that summary sheet a few weeks back. Face Park restroom is in need of replacement, and we're thinking $38,000. We're thinking you could deal with that with a trailer, too. It's a nice enough facility. I think it would work, it would fit, as I said, from an affordability standpoint, it makes a lot of sense. It makes a lot of sense. You could dress that with rock to make it fit the veneer of the pavilion and make it fit the restroom look too. Pace Park Pavilion. It needs help. It has done a tremendous job of serving its purpose up to this point, but it needs a roof, it needs some rock prepared, and it needs to be properly wired from an electrician standpoint. It needs decent ceiling fans in it. You know, it may need some amenities that you may want to add to that to join it. Lighting is a big issue in that pavilion. But we're just at that point where we feel that if we're going to have a park pavilion, we need to make that park pavilion functional and make sure that it has longer life and make sure that it meets the needs of those who are renting that right now. So we estimate the cost of that upgrade would be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $70,000. The Pace Park lawn development. We're dealing right now with something we're going to continue to deal with if we don't get in and take a serious look at what's going on at Pace Park with the lawn. And when I talk about the lawn is what now is gravel, is a gravel lawn as a result of the last flooding event we had. There's a benefit to getting in there and looking at a way to put down and plant that properly to the point that it has some sustainability. You're going to deal with deposits all the time when water comes down. There's no question about that. But there's some design characteristics you can build into the development of that area down there that can minimize some of that, number one, but number two, that can make the ease of cleaning it up a little bit easier. You're going to need to decide if you're going to spend this type of money on that, whether you're going to continue to park people down there. Right now, we have an agreement with the adjacent business that's allowed to come down and use that, and they pay the city for parking, which down there, not a lot, but it's something to think about. If you're going to go in and plant it and plant that thing right, you could either put a little parking lot in there for them to use or simply make it a great lawn. You can go in there and landscape it, and it creates some direction to get people at the beach where you created for them to go in so they're not picking and choosing places up and down that stream bed to go and worrying down the bank. It's important to stabilize the bank where they go in and out and secure that area and get it away from the private property intrusion as much as possible. And so those are things that need to be looked at, but we think that's about $200,000 venture, you know, maybe a little bit more than on how much we want to put down there. The visitor trolley, we've estimated that it's going to cost us about $16,000 to put a new trolley in. That trolley is, it would be a little bit smaller trolley than we have. We continue to operate the one we have, but we think for festivals and events, but also as part of our day-to-day, we probably would want a gas trolley down there. Right now, we have a trolley that's a battery trolley, and battery trolleys are great, you know, if you're not trying to run them as heavily as we try to run those during our season. Professional services. This is a big line item, and it's a line item that we think is the minimal cost, we think it's the minimum cost at this stage of the game, and it may actually go up a little bit more as we get in the bid process on this. We have accepted maintenance on the interstate as far as the right-of-way goes. We've got the gateway signs that are our responsibility now. We have all of the area underneath 35. We're blessed to have the volunteers who do a tremendous job of mowing that circle, the right-of-way circle there right at Salado Plaza and Main Street. We have a lot of right-of-way that needs to be mowed. We have a park, Pace Park, that needs to be robed once we get the gravel out of it. It needs to be kept up. We have Serena Park that needs to be kept in mode. We have the Sculpture Garden that we probably need to get into the business of dealing with so we're not chasing down mowers to see if they'll donate time every two or three weeks. Those cost money as far as their mow jobs, and our feeling is that we need to probably look at securing a contractor that can come in and could mow those properties for us on a regular basis. So we have some regularity as far as the maintenance goes. Tex, as you know, we're not talking about mowing the inside median of Interstate 35. We're talking about mowing the access roads, which is our responsibility. There may be some Main Street obligation, particularly on the south side of Main Street, that we've got an obligation on. People don't realize that we accepted maintenance responsibility on all of those state roadways, and that's just what the state does with communities. And so we need to think about how we're going to do that. And we're blessed to have the volunteers, but we don't want to burden them any more than they're already burdened. They're doing a phenomenal job. I think we can supplement their efforts through this. The Salado Volunteer Fire Department, I don't know if Shane's in the back there is, but they've lived. We're at a point where we need to do new contract with them. Obviously, they're talking about doing an ESD formation, which is great, which would eliminate this particular issue, but our feeling is that we probably need to look at increasing the allocation to this fire department. We've been at $40,000 for a while, and I think we need to bump that number up to maybe somewhere in the neighborhood of about $10,000. Animal Control Services. This is one that we've waited for the commissioner to get his feet levelled on, and I think we're going to have a discussion with him about that. And where that goes, I don't know, but I think whether we end up with the county's plan as it is right now or whether we're able to work out some type of hybrid to the point where we pay a flat fee to the point where we're not having to worry about paying for animal. We think we're probably looking somewhere in the neighborhood of about $5,000 over the next three or five years on an annual basis to deal with animals. Right now, take your animal to the shelter, you're going to get hit with cost, or the village is going to get hit with cost, as we do in the Greenwood County. And it's not a cheap cost, $35, $45 an animal. And when the word gets out, people start trying to take loads of feral cats over there that can get extremely expensive. You know, we're not asking for patrol services as far as animal patrol goes. The county will come, and if that law enforcement needs them to come for a dog bite, what we're talking about is mainly storage and delivery from that standpoint. Associate judge, you know, I think we're going to, as we look at developing that program, how you fund that judge is going to be difficult to try to determine, you know, what you're going to take away from Judge Engleking in those times where he's unable to perform. So we thought that you're probably looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of about $1,500 additional cost as far as judicial services go. We're not proposing any change in the salary for the main judge, Judge Engleking. General engineering costs. One of the things we found, and not unexpectedly, is the fact that as we grow in this community and as we deal with road issues and some period of drainage issues, we end up tapping our engineers. So we're feeling we're going to need some additional engineering costs that we calculate into the budget, probably somewhere in three to five years, somewhere being, you know, with another $7,500 in additional cost, you're looking at probably $10,000 or $12,000 in engineering costs. Legal services. We think you're probably going to hit a point where you're going to be looking at maybe to add somewhere in the neighborhood of about $15,000 in legal services, which quite frankly is pretty darn low for this village. You're looking at right now, a baseline number to build off of, somewhere in the neighborhood of $35,000 to $40,000. There's no way you're going to go out and hire a legal staff, and a good legal staff for less than, you know, $70,000, $80,000, $90,000, I think, just from experience. Comprehensive plan. We just finished an update of the comprehensive plan, but as we talked about, there's going to come a time in the next three to five years that we need to get serious and redo the plan. Salado has changed a lot over the years. We patched it with this update, but you're going to need to hire a consultant to come in and lead it. You say, why hire the consultant? You hire the consultant because you need an independent mind to come in and lead that task and lead that project to do it right. So especially when you're talking about a complete rewrite. So what does that mean? What's that mean is right now, your general fund budget is sitting at about $1.12 million. And what we're talking about is identifying somewhere in the neighborhoods of almost $1.95, $1.94 million in additional needs, which takes your total budget up to somewhere in the neighborhood of $3 million, you know, the next three to five years. That's the annual amount. It's a lot of money. There is no expectation that you're going to say, let's fund it all. And it's wrong for someone to go online and say that. It's, this is purely and simply an educational process to let people know those true needs that the staff has identified to help them be able to meet the service demands and meet future growth projections for this community in the coming years. Again, there is no expectation on the part of staff that this goes. These numbers do not include any type of salary adjustments that you may want to make. We talked about in the area of PD, for example, that they're in a horse race right now as far as their pay goes and trying to stay competitive to be able to secure the best officers possible from that standpoint. We're not talking about administration pay, you know, as far as the city manager's pay. We're talking about staff pay as far as looking at those salaries and making sure that we're in market and are able to keep in market so we attract and keep good employees. This doesn't take into account any type of other types of incentive programs you may put in place for employees. You may want to sit back and look at the benefits program we offer right now for our employees. Again, you're in a game of positioning to secure the best possible people you can who will stay and will stay to serve your people in a professional manner. So that said, that's the needs budget. Eyes, I know, poked out pretty quick at $3 million. We don't anticipate a $3 million budget five years from now, but what we do anticipate is a number that's going to be probably higher than we have right now. And I think it's important to plant these seeds so you can start looking around and start seeing, or you start hearing comments from people about, do we have 24/7 police coverage? Or how much do we pay the fire department? My gosh, you pay them the same, but look what they're doing. Their calls are going through the roof, those type of things. We estimate it, I think it's going to be, you know, a few years before an ESD can be put in place. So I think it's important that we recognize the needs of that department and what they do for us. Quite frankly, what we get for that money spent is pretty darn cheap. If you were to start your own fire department, it would not be a pretty picture, costly, just like the concept of getting this up to 24/7 on the PD. But that's basically the needs budget.
We ask questions?
Absolutely.
Hold on a second. I think this is amazing. When I was going door to door, when I was trying to be one of these aldermen, a lot of these same things came up. People had asked me, are we going to do these things? So my question is, is it possible to have some kind of forecast development of Salado to support this? I think this is amazing.
Yeah, I, you know, we could do some numbers based on the development that we're seeing. You're aware of the sensitivities on the tax side. You're aware of the length of the debt on the wastewater side. You're aware of the fact that when you do a bond issue, you're going to pump money more on the taxes. And there are ways, there are some alternatives to look at it. We can sit and try to, we can do some forecasting and look at it from that standpoint. I think from a revenue standpoint, you know, with the development that comes in, you're going to see some benefit. Are you going to get to that point? Because keep in mind, a lot of what we're talking about here, these are operational, these are general operating costs. You have one of, you have absolutely probably one of the lowest, if not the lowest, maintenance and operation property tax budget for property tax in Bell County. And I'm not advocating increase in that. And I really want them, please understand that. We need to try to keep that as low as we possibly can. But the thing to keep in mind is to tackle some of these needs, you're limited where you're going to get money from, and it's going to be an increase. If the people are saying they want to pay for it to get it, you're there. But we can do some forecasts and like to see how far we can get to that.
Yeah, because I think, you know, growth, Salado, we have to do it right the first time instead of going back and applying bandages. I'm not saying make this pain on the taxpayers, but if there's a way that we can compare apples to oranges, and make smart decisions upfront, I think it's a win-win situation.
Yeah, the whole of this, like, is put these out there to give you an idea. They can choose to prioritize to see what you see. I mean, you have needs, and the needs as a community grows, do nothing but grow. They don't get less despite what some may think.
Thank you.
Other discussion, please.
Well, I have a question. So I was asked the other day about, it's loosely tied to this, so follow me a second. So I was asking a while back about the library district and how our funding is split 50/50. So a lot of places don't have, they can allot that entire amount where we're only getting cash flow to a lot. So is there a way that maybe we can share that number with the community? Not right now off the top of your head, because I mean, I know it's right here. But if we could take that number and show what the library is getting and how big, like, what their needs are, you know, what theirs, having to spend their money on, because I think that that's an important comparison for people to understand that we're not just throwing a lot of money. We're really only getting, you know, 50% of it or half, whatever that number is. So.
We can show you that picture without doubt. They get, you know, we get, we get a percent.
Right.
And they get a half, and the county gets a half, and that state gets the rest. And that is a, I will tell you from experience that I've seen many, if any, instances where a library district has surrendered its share of the sales tax.
I don't think they're going to, but I think it's important for the village to see what versus what we're getting.
Absolutely.
And what we have to use that for, because I think everybody thinks that we're getting the whole, and we're not.
Absolutely. I think that's a very good respect. Same thing on the hot tax. I mean, I didn't realize I'm not going to get into.
Other discussion, please. John, could you, I don't want to go through your slides slowly just for a few minutes so that we can just have a final look at it. I want to see the dollars is what I want to see.
Administration of Manpower is 172, Development Services is 58, Public Safety is 59.
I'm going to ask you a question there. Public safety, I know what you're talking about. I see the three police officers and all of that. Is there any cost in there for a system that would warn us if a tornado is coming or bad weather or anything? Is that part of that cost?
It's part of your regular spending fund cost. We adopted that in the last book here. There is not money in here, which is something you're going to see, we talked about last year in the budget, when you presented your budget. I think one of the items in that budget is going to be, we had talked about setting up potentially a camera system to the city to the point that we have the ability to recognize license plates from a crime prevention standpoint that's huge, especially at night when car burglaries take place, two or three o'clock in the morning, and you see who's coming and going from town. That helps law enforcement in that process.
Okay, then would you try to, anyone else want to ask any questions about this as we go or make a comment?
I don't know your thoughts on drainage. Understand, when you do street improvements, you do drainage improvements with those, and that's not the type of drainage improvements I'm talking about. I'm talking about dealing with the issue back on Stagecoach Circle. I'm talking about dealing with the issue on Chisholm Trail. I will tell you that the folks in this community have been very patient, and I appreciate that and applaud that, but at some point, some of those folks, and they're not just one or two neighbors, they're four or five neighbors in this town that go through an inundation process, you know, on roads in their neighborhoods. You're going to be able to solve all those problems, but the kicker is you can ease the flows and then redirect the flows and manage the flows better than we're doing right now. I'll give you an example. We're getting, we get phone calls on a regular basis on Old Mill down there by Brooks Brothers as far as those condos, about getting in there and shaping that ditch out and then working on that ditch and getting to the point where it flows water. We get calls on Chisholm Trail on a regular basis about that ditch system, and is there a way to create some consistency in there? What you've got right now is you have this, and we had the meeting this week with the subdivision developer about just that very issue, and that is, why don't we just let the people put in their own driveway culverts? And the problem is, you get consistency. John may put a double barrel in, you know, that has way more capacity than Frank does, and Frank's meets the code, so John's hammering Frank, and then Frank turns around and gets the next person. He may have something that's smaller than that and doesn't meet code. And what happens is you run into exactly what we run into on Chisholm Trail when we get six inches of rain in four hours, and you get into eight inches of water flowing over a road, and people standing on the bumpers of their cars screaming, water's fixing to get out of their house. We can't, the growth is not stopping upstairs. I sat in a meeting yesterday where I was talking to some of the folks about the school and some of the drainage issues that they're talking about. They're talking about back end of the property by the old creek. Let me get you redirected.
Well, two things. The first one was we were talking about the drainage study, how it's expensive, it's the authorities actually do the mapping. But how, doesn't FEMA go ahead and go out there and redraw their maps every so often regardless? I guess print would be a different possibility.
Now, they, let me tell you what they do. They, very seldom do they come in and do that on a voluntary basis.
I know they did it after floods.
You're, you're, those are the times, those are the times when you, when you're in the best position with them. Is, is because they wanna see additional restriction on floodplain development to minimize their insurance claims costs and those type of things. So they'll come in a lot of times, and they'll offer to redo them. Come in and do. Water Development Board has a partnership program, where they actually have money that's allocated. Typically, to go in and map a community, this community, I would bet to map this community, remap this community is gonna be in the neighborhood of about a, for a FEMA project, somewhere in the neighborhood of about $150, maybe, maybe $175,000. And normally what happens is, you go in a 50/50 situation. If the feds have the money, they'll go happy with it, and you can do that type of situation. When I was in Wermel during the flood, we had just worked with the county on a regional drainage study, and had some of the baseline data, and we got that thing remapped in about four months, uh, very quickly, and at no cost, additional cost to us.
So I guess, what's the difference in the FEMA, doing it the FEMA route, and paying, um, somebody to come in and do jurisdictional determinations for, you know, like submitting through the Corps?
The, the, what, what.
I mean, which one helps us, I guess, more? Does the FEMA one show with where the, I, I think is where the FEMA ones initially show with where the jurisdictional determination that the Corps is making, whether or not it's a jurisdictional waterway, so water's view us?
No, what, what, no, we, two different issues, yeah, two different. On floodplain management fees, it's a FEMA, it's a FEMA map. What they look is, is they look at drainage, yeah, they look at the drainage, uh, and they, they try to calculate base load off those. And what, what happens is, the ones we have were done, and, and they'll, they'll tell you, oh, we did those in 98. You know, they're, they're 98s. And then the kicker is, they, they, they went through a digitalization process. And if you really drill down and look at the numbers in the digitalization process, and they did this nationwide, all it did was it put a paper map into a digital format. There really was not any additional study done. And I think with the growth and development that has occurred upstream from our watershed, there's no question that numbers are off right now, as, as far as our firm goes. We're obligated to follow that firm unless somebody is willing to come in and pay the money in their individual project to submit a map revision to FEMA, and, and have it reengineered just for that particular area. But it's, it's not an expensive, or it's not a cheap process, but it's a valuable process in a couple of ways. It's number one, everybody fears when you come in and remap a community from a floodplain standpoint, that it's gonna increase, and more people are gonna get tied into the flood regulation piece. It works both ways. I've seen it work both ways. And, and, and you see, you see almost as much gets out as gets in, in the remapping process. But it's a different deal than jurisdictional.
There was another question there, I don't know what it was.
Let me see the next one, please. Don, on the Pace Park side of it. At one time or another, we had worked with the service groups in doing some special projects for Pace Park. And there was, uh, a committee that was started with, uh, different governments, you know, like Lime's Club, and some of the churches, and, and all the other ones that are in our community. Whatever happened to that committee?
That's your park advisory board. And they, you have membership on that board from Rotary, Lime, Keepsley, Beautiful, uh, the neighborhood, the old Pace Park trustees have representation. And they, they meet, and they, they presented a development plan for y'all, which included some of these items, quite frankly. Now, there is the possibility that you could go get grant funding for some of this. But I will tell you that if you're on, on the lawn development, depending on how far you wanna go on the lawn development, it's gonna get, there'll be some design costs that are gonna be probably pretty significant. And maybe some engineering costs, because you're playing down there in that flood. But at some point, we need to think through that, cause I mean, it's a challenge we're up against right now down there. We have a lot of large rocks that have to be pulled out of there, and it's gonna take some excavation.
Any other comments or questions?
The trolley is one of those costs that, that we might be able to pick up part of that cost, not all that cost, out of the hot line. But it just depends on how the tourists and the market budget.
Any questions or comments on that? Next.
You know, there's an interesting question that, that I'm not, I'm just tossing it out, out, because we're trying to look long-term. And I, it, I don't think, it just hit me the other day when I was driving up, and, and that is, what happens when that stagecoach painting on the side of the highway begins to fade? I believe if it got vandalized, the text staff would come in and do that. But I'm wondering from a right-of-way maintenance agreement standpoint, whether there's any liability on our part for that. And that's a note I've made myself to ask about, because that'll be interesting.
What text dot has told me is that picture of the stagecoach and everything was not supposed to have been painted. The contractor came in and painted it. And it looks good, well, there we are. All right. Don, how are we gonna pay for this?
That is.
That's $600,000 a year, more, over five years?
No, this is an annual number.
Annual number?
These, that's what I'm saying, these are annual numbers. This is an annual number, looking at three to five years out. That's why we said those are, you're, you're looking at doubling, tripling your budget to meet all of those needs.
Well, it certainly is a walk in reality. If we don't do this, and we keep putting it off, and we put it off, and say, well, let's wait for next, next year, next year, next year. Our roads are gonna get bad, our property worth is gonna go down with the roads. The water flooding is gonna be another thing. Police officers were already stretching it right now, even though we have good things. Uh, I have asked a person to work with me on grants. I'm not gonna put the name out, because I wanna make sure that person wants to do it, and has really considered what's gonna be involved. But you're right, grants can help with some of this. But this is what happens when you have a growing community. And folks, I wanna tell you, I, I love Salado just like it is. I love it, I love to see y'all walking down the streets, and, you know, have a care in the world. And I love to see the golf carts and all that other kind of thing. And it's, it's where I want to live. But I'm gonna say something to you. I, or no one here, I don't care who your mayor is, cannot keep Salado like it is right now. We've got to properly plan this community out. I agree totally with what John said. We cannot make mistakes, we cannot. And we've already put a great burden that we had to put on. Well, we, we had nothing to do with it, but the school bond. Folks, there was no choice about that. I'm gonna play plain and simple with you. There's no choice about this. We've got to work through it. I think a forecast, John, is exactly what we've got to do before we go any further. I do not see anything on here that's frivolous, I don't.
They did a pretty good job of coming up with needs, I think. I've, I've done this several years, much longer years in this business, and this, this group did a really good job of picking out those items, and they were pretty frugal, as far as what they felt. I will tell you that if you were to fund this with, to operate with the current MNO, but MNO tax rate for the city, if you were to say, what would it take? You would go from probably the lowest MNO tax rate in Bell County to the highest.
Wow. Walk in reality. Any other questions or comments to this?
The only thing I'd like to say is, it's great to know this upfront, and nobody said this job was gonna be easy.
No, they did not. I had some business this week in Holland and in Bartlett. And I met Bartlett's new mayor, and he said, what is your operating budget? I told him what it was, he says, you gotta be kidding. I had to go into Holland and talk to their, one of their people in their offices in their administration building. Person put down her pen. Said, how do you do it? 1.6 million dollars?
1.1.
1.1 million is what I bet you is?
Yeah, they're about.
We pay five policemen. We try to fix the roads. We pay our staff. We pay for air conditioning, electricity, utilities, and repairs. We try to do the roads, thank goodness for Bell County, who with the chip and seal has helped us. Try to do it on 1.1 million dollars. You can't. This is reality. And yes, we're gonna have more homes coming in. We'll talk about the commercial side of this in a few minutes. And sales tax? Can't do it on 1.1 million, cannot. There's your walk in reality. That's the end of my comments. Are there any other comments that need to be made?
I'm sorry if I went too long.
You did. Thank you. That is probably the best thing that we could have done as we begin to plan for 2020. Thank you very much for that, and thank you for being very conscious and very honest and transparent in what our village is going to need. Okay, discussion and possible action. Discuss and consider possible action regarding a proposed memorandum of understanding between the Village of Salado Police Department and the Children's Advocacy Center of Central Texas Incorporated.
Mr. Mayor, this is a housekeeping item that says, basically, we're asking you to consider approval of the MOU, the memorandum of understanding, uh, between our police department and the Children's Advocacy Center of Central Texas. It's, it's a, basically an agreement that establishes the framework for how we're gonna deal with, uh, child-related crimes, be it sexual abuse, be it abuse, uh, how we deal with, uh, number one, the investigation process. And it's a cooperative investigation process, how we deal with the medical and mental health treatment of, of our individuals. Uh, so staff recommends approval. This is an agreement that involves no additional cost to the village, uh, but we need the framework in place to work together.
Questions, Don, please.
I got a question, Don. Being the Salado Independent School District, they're like, they spend more time with their kids than anybody, pretty much. Are they gonna be tied into this also to?
It's law enforcement, it's a law enforcement agreement, it's so.
So can they take input, though, from the school district?
Yes.
If they identify, I mean, they, they know this game.
Yeah, there's, there's.
I think that's an important piece to this.
Very much so. There's statutory requirements on the education side that require, uh, teachers and administrators and, and other people involved with the schools to report, uh, any knowledge they have of abuse that may be taking place. So there is an interface that takes place. This mainly relates to use of facilities. For example, if you've ever seen the, the Bell County facility, of course, where they go and interview the children and things like that. It, it deals with that relationship. It also sets up the protocol for how the children are being interviewed, uh, or being taken and treated in situations.
Any other questions to Don, please? If not, I'll entertain a motion, please. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, discussion.
Question.
Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Post likewise. Discuss and consider possible action regarding contract amendment number 11 with McLean Construction regarding construction of the Salado wastewater collection system.
This is, uh, what we call the cleanup contract on the original contract for collection, for the collection system. This is the cleanup item that goes back and addresses any additional material we needed, any, any material we need to get rid of, that, uh, any scope of the original project that we determined we did not need. Also, some additional work that was done in the process. At the end of the day, when you look at the additions and the deletions, uh, we end up increasing slightly, uh, somewhere to the tune of, uh, that, uh, as far as the original scope goes, it's actually gonna come in below, uh, which, which we're kinda pleased to say. McLean did an outstanding job, uh, but this should be the last, uh, of any contract amendment that's relating to the original scope, is the cleanup. Typically waiting for the end to do the finish up.
Questions to Don, please.
Is there a cost minimum that you can appreciate yourself? Do you have to bring them to the court?
You know, it's always better, you can, you can establish that, but I will tell you, in, in the world of these type of projects, I know it's hanging to deal with a thousand dollars here and a thousand dollars there, but in, in the world of transparency, I think it's important that we bring them forward. So if there's any type of change in the scope, people understand the costs associated with that. And this is just a cleanup piece. You can do that, though, Amber, exactly, if you wanted to. You could say anything over $5,000. Staff has the ability to make that adjustment or modification, something along those lines, which we're not opposed to. I think you're gonna find out this, and that is, if we do that, I'm gonna incorporate it into my administrative report and at least tell you what we did, just because I don't want somebody to think that we're us.
Okay, just something to think about.
I got a question for you, sir. This, this is amendment number 11. This is the final contract amendment.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're preparing, so you know, we're preparing the summary of all of the contract amendments.
That's what's my question.
It's part of our closeout, so you'll get that.
So in that summary, can we see things like errors in construction if you're wanting, required changes or unrealized requirements? Can it be broke down to that detail, or is it just gonna be, we did this because of it?
It's gonna be the scope of the contract amendment. I mean, we have copies of each of the contract amendments we'll include in there, where you can read the various items much like this. That's what we do every time we do one of these. So you see them?
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions, please? I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the contract amendment number 11 with McLean Construction Company.
Second. Motion's been made, and seconded, discussion, please.
Question.
Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Post likewise.
Mayor, I will tell you that, that if we, as we bring this project to a close, uh, your diligence, your board's diligence, uh, this project came in, it was a rare project as far as the total project cost, which is what was originally budgeted. You know, you've approved some significant amendments to this, but those were beyond the scope. Those were additional extensions and things along those lines. But I think when you see the final report on the project which we're preparing, you're gonna find out, you, you came in very close to, if not below, budget on both ends of this deal, uh, which I think says a lot about y'all's monitoring. And it also says a heck of a lot about the contractors we have on board. They were extremely careful and understood our concerns about spending, so.
And Don, thank you. Because your experience that you've brought with us to this helped that to happen. Thank you. Well, the next one is mine, and I'm, I'm gonna take a few moments with this. Discuss and consider action relating to the possible creation of an Economic Development Advisory Board. I have been thinking about this for some time. I didn't know quite how to do it. I wanted to talk with Don about it, and that is what I've done. I wanted to talk with the alderman about it. You see, I can't do that. I could only talk to two, because that's a walking quorum. If I go any more than that, and if I said, okay, I'm gonna talk to Frank and Amber now, and then I'm gonna go to John and Michael, I can't do that. That's a walking quorum. So I talked to Don, and I said, Don, here's the reasons that I want to recommend an EDAR, an EDC, Differences Association and Committee. They're all the same. So here it is, folks. Somehow or another, if we're gonna keep Salado the beautiful place that it is, and I've already told you, we're not gonna be able to do that. we're not going to be able to do that, but what we can do is take some really good steps in that direction to control growth, yet to make sure that we have great businesses coming here, really good ones. Ones that, and I'm not going to name any of them, that, you know, you really like to go, whether it's an eating place or whatever kind of business it is. We've got to maintain our historical side. I hear a lot of talk about it, "Please do not lose the historical side of Selaydo." I couldn't believe, I could not think of a better word to say than, "You're sure right, we can't." In fact, when Mrs. Fields came up, oh, I don't know, maybe two or three months ago, and she looked at us and she said, "How come no alderman and mayor do not belong to Historical Committee?" I can't speak for these guys and lady, I don't even want to do that, but I will tell you, it spoke to my heart. So, I wrote out a check for forty dollars, and now I'm a part of the Historical Committee. I wanted to be a part of that because they're going to have to work with this E D A, E D C, they're going to have to work together, not only to be progressive, but to be historical. And my friend, that's not going to be easy, but that's what has to be done. But I guess what really stood me the most happened in the last two months. Georgetown walked in and made some offers that I could not even compete with. And, the glass factory. I was involved as much as I could be to keep it. Went and talked to Gail myself. I know Frank did also. Why? We need you here. I couldn't even begin to compete what was offered to them. And I will tell you right now, there are two other businesses in Selaydo that are moving in also. In the next couple of weeks, I am going to have an appointment with the mayor of Georgetown. It really has nothing to do, except that woke me up mentally, and I decided, "I throw it out and see what we can do." Final thing is, is this, then I'm going to give you what my suggestion is. Twenty years ago, when I moved here, twenty years ago, Selaydo was the place to come. Businesses were doing, it was a novel place to be here. Different things were happening, and no one around us could even compare to what Selaydo was. Got news for you, folks. Have you seen what Waco's doing? Georgetown? Green? Belton? Temple? Lampasses? You're not the only show in the game anymore. We've got to have some very progressive thinking. We've got to have some very conservative thinking. And we've got to find a way to keep Selaydo right at the center where they say, as they do now, when they come, "Oh, I love Selaydo, I just love Selaydo," but what's happened to these places? That's in your hands. It's in these hands, and whoever is the mayor, it's going to be in that person's hands. This is critical, folks. This is not something to say, "Oh, I don't know, it's another, he's on his soapbox again." Yes, I am, because I love this community, and I love living in this community as much as you do. So, what you understand, people have other places they can go to, buy from and do things with. We've got to work with our chamber, our tourism, and with the E D A, E D C. This is what we've got to do to be able to make things happen. So, here is my suggestion. That tonight, we vote to have and create and start an E D A R C, however you want to say it, committee. That's number one. Number two, the committee needs to be seven members. And to get those seven members, same way that we've done with P and Z, we'll put an ad in the paper, "If you want it, come fill out the paperwork," and we'll go from there, so that everybody has a chance to be a part of it. And the third thing that I want to add to this is I want to be able to name the chair of it. Every person up here, including the two that are not here, could do it, and I'd have absolute confidence in their ability. But for five and a half years, I have worked with one that owns a business, been active in a lot of different things. I'd like to recommend that Frank Coachman be the chair of it. So, I... Questions?
I got a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
If we must, people on the advisory board, is there still a possibility to reach out to a professional organization also to assist the people?
I would hope so.
Okay, so would it be funding for that at all, if we need to contract somebody on a short-term basis to say, "Give us..." "Do things better, we're doing things wrong." I'm not taking people that we pick, it's just so they have a knowledge.
You know, you've got a cog that we can tap in, in that sense, and then they can assist us in that area, from a standpoint of providing some support along those lines. One of the things that needs to happen is a leakage study needs to be prepared, which shows where our money is going out of this community and not staying into this community, where people buying their socks, shoes, where they're going to eat, those type of things, to get an idea of what this community is lacking in the way of meeting the needs and the requirements. And that study will go a long way towards helping tie this committee's purpose and principle and recommendations, I would hope. But yeah, I think you can get support, we can find, we can find some money in the budget, you know, to get that support, I think it's important. Part of it's a data game, but I tell you, the other part of it is a community game from a standpoint of deciding what it is you as a community want in the way of commercial development, in the way of economic development. Do you want smoke stats? Do you want no big boxes? Do you want, uh... fast food restaurants? Do you want, you know, malls? Do you want, you know, you, you've got to try to decide what your needs are, what type of developments you're interested in, and even potentially the size of that development. But yeah, we can find, they're, they're supposed to tap in there to assist the committee, you know, at the beginning of the stage, to give them some education on that piece, but, but also, from a standpoint of some data monitor, to give some guidance as far as... A leakage study is going to open a lot of people's eyes in this community, and they're going to learn how much money is actually exiting Selaydo, Texas, when it could be spent in Selaydo, Texas.
I would have to think that Georgetown's playing that game now, because they've got...
The problem you're up against, and that's the thing you have to keep in mind, the problem you're up against when you're going against communities like Georgetown and Round Rock, Temple, Belton, you know, Waco, those guys, is those communities have room in their sales tax to create what are called four A and four B boards, or four A and four B taxes, which are, which is basically an allocation to stabilize the community to adopt through public vote, to generate funds to go towards economic development efforts, be it incentivizing for road construction, for developments coming in, or offering, you know, incentives, i.e. what was done with one business here in this community. I guarantee you Georgetown didn't reach into their general fund and pull money out of their general fund to go pay this business to go to Selaydo. What they did was they had incentive funds generated more than likely through their E D C taxes, you know, their, their four A, four Bs, that they're able to buy and use that to incentivize. And understand, those aren't free giveaways, and that's the thing that I think a lot of people misunderstand. They don't just come to you and say, "I'm going to give you seventy-five thousand dollars for you to move your business to my community." What happens is, "I'm going to give you seventy-five thousand dollars, and then in the first four or five years, you're going to be obligated to produce ten jobs that generate no less than fifty thousand dollars a year for a job, and then you're going to be obligated to produce certain things from a marketing standpoint, from a job performance standpoint, even from a facility improvement standpoint." So, there's not, there's no free ride in the ballgame, but it is an attractive incentive to a business that's, that's looking to build or looking to grow, or feels that's reached its peak. We don't have the room, Amber mentioned a minute ago about the sales tax that the library gets. Right now, we do not have any available sales tax capacity to go in and ask the people to approve a four A or a four B tax. All of our tax is allocated. You're allowed to have, in a community, from a sales tax standpoint, you're allowed your, your city tax, you're allowed your library tax, you're allowed mechanic tax, but at the end of the day, at the end of the day, it's not going to be more than, you know, one and a half, or two, excuse me, because the state's six and a half. So, you're at that cap. It's not like if the library was only getting twenty-five, point two-five as opposed to fifty, then there's that window, there's that gap in availability that you can generate money. If we had a four A or four B tax available to us, it would drastically reduce the debt service for wastewater, because you could argue very easily that the debt service for that wastewater system is an allowable expense of four A and four B tax. So, we're in kind of an interesting predicament. Yes, you could say in the budgeting process each year, "I'm going to allocate a percentage of our sales tax revenue and put that aside in a separate E D C incentive fund," and that may be something you want to do. There are other ways, though, you can incentivize the development through development agreements, and talking about sales tax payback agreements, those type of things. And it's, it's, there's not a lot of science to it, it's pretty straightforward, it's a competition game in a lot of ways, but we're kind of a little bit behind the curve. We're not totally neutered in the process, but we don't have the type of funding that communities like Georgetown, Round Rock and others have, that choose to sometimes prey on small communities like this and try to, try to take away, you know, visual businesses from, from communities. They don't do it with a, with a negative effect. This is not like going out and grabbing Madison Bumgarner from Giants, you know, in mid-season. This is, this is looking at a long-term base, it's looking at, it's not done towards hate towards Selaydo, it's their attempt to grow their economy. And we have no money right now allocated, and really don't have a funding source dedicated to that. You can't use hot money to go out and attract hotels, yet you can use hot money to market the hotels once again. You can allocate a percentage of your sales tax, but the problem is this, John, take away from that sales tax? That sales tax right now is funding your general day-to-day operations, so are you going to pick up that slack, and how are you going to pick that slack up? The only other ways you have to pick that slack up is through looking at increasing fees, be it building permit, development fees, or property taxes. And it's a tough one, but absolutely, we can find support for the group.
Thank you. Any other questions to me or Don? Then I will entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
To approve, this one we've got to be right on with.
The chief? And motion to approve. Frank, the, the, which you would do for the proposal you put forward, I guess, is you would issue a public call for people interview process like we gave with P and Z, and choose those six members to join their member to go to the line. That turns out...
Okay, just as we read this one.
Is there a second to that motion? Good. Discussion, please.
I understand the idea of having somebody from our board on the committee. I think my problem with it is that, because of the nature of it being specific to economic development, that it really needs to be clear of everyone on our board so they can advise us, and it takes away... It's hard to explain, but it, it, I think it diminishes it a little bit by having somebody, like oversight from our board. I think that they should be coming to us with recommendations, and then our board is here to approve it. And if Don's sitting on it, even if he's not chairing it, but if he's sitting there and he's listening to it in an advisory capacity, to me, it seems like it should be a standalone committee. I don't think that, it's not, it's not the nomination specifically of Frank, I really think that it should be standalone and separate from, from who we are, separate of freedom to come up with their own ideas that may not be something that somebody from our board would be like, "Oh, well, if I can't do that," or, "Hmm, I don't know." You know, they would be able to be, they would be completely independent of our judgment, and they can bring in more creative ideas, I guess. That, that's the only thing that kind of holds it back a little bit.
Other discussion, please?
I think it's, I think if Mr. Coachman is the chair, I think that he would have more of an insight into the capabilities of the, of the organization that we're being formed, and I think it would, it would fit hand in hand with what we're trying to accomplish. I mean, I really do, and I don't think it, I think it's a smart play to have all the knowledge, if you want to say, in one place, open to the public, open to an advisory committee, and somebody who was knowledgeable on the, on the way Selaydo has to go to be successful. I think it's a good match.
Other discussion, please? Do I hear the call for the question? Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Close likewise. Pass. Frank, since you raised your hand, I assume that you agreed to do this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Amber, your point is very well... Thank you. Okay. Discuss and consider issues relating to development of the proposed fiscal year 2020 operating budget for the Village of Selaydo. Don?
Mayor, this is on here in every board meeting agenda until we approve the budget, just in that you have any type of ideas or anything you want to suggest as far as motion approval on items you want to put in the budget or take in. No discussion necessary if you don't want to have a special translation.
Are there anything you see in there that we have looked at that we really think we're going to have to try to find a way to do this? If there is, is there a chance to either suggest to Don or to, well, suggest to Don or recommend to John?
Difficult discussion to have without seeing the budget.
I do think...
Yeah, I think it's only, the idea is if you have any ideas you want to be considered for inclusion in that proposed budget as it's getting developed, translation, if you think you want to see money spent for this, or if you want to see this added or looked at. I e. John just mentioned a consultant.
I got, I got one thing. Would it be possible to have a forum or some kind of, where we can do a line-by-line review of the budget?
You will, yeah. I think, we talked a little bit about that before, previous meeting, you will, you will actually get a line-by-line meeting where we'll go through it and explain every line up in the budget and explain whatever cost is in the budget.
Because that's where the questions will come out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is just made to give you the opportunity, if you, if you... This is just made to give you the opportunity, if you, if you roll over this morning and said, you know, I'm thinking about, maybe we'll look at this.
May I ask you, Don, to put the needs budget back on this? Now, I, I want to look at each one of the slides again. Wait a minute, wait a minute, go back, please. I got, I'm a little bit slow in my thinking. I just have to process it for just a moment. Don, which of these is you think most important? Oh, wait a minute. All of y'all, which do you think is most important?
Y'all, y'all.
Yes, it's our decision, yes.
I think the scanner is probably the, it's going to have impact on the way that we do business up here and it's relatively inexpensive. I mean, I think, you know, we could probably start there.
I agree.
Maybe add a small amount in budget that over a couple of years. Before she has to leave, discussion will help alleviate that a little bit. Um, and but I, to me, the, the, um, only doing the study, but more importantly, do the immediate improvements that we know we can do, that we know is going to make an impact, because we know where those, those, those things are.
I can say every one of them, probably with the exception of the visitor Charlie. We just need to do that. I would say one, the restroom improvement, we've got to do that. Brains this year have really hurt us. And Pace Park. I think the volunteer fire department.
I think that one of the things from the safety aspect, we've really got to pay attention to is the mowing.
Yes.
Right. We've done it before, like this year, don't have the volunteers keeping up with it. It's, uh, it's a safety issue as in the corners.
Yeah, sure. We need to do something about all the gravel in Pace Park that the creek has brought down so that people can use Pace Park. We can do nothing about the legal services. That is critical. Comprehensive plan. Well, again, Don, one more time. Is that it?
Yeah.
Anything else that John, Frank, you'd like to add to this?
No, I think there are some things when we look at the, the overall plan budget or your budget when it comes to this that we maybe have to just get some of these. I agree. John?
Well, that's it. Discuss and consider issues relating, Don. We didn't give you a lot.
Again, this is, this is for you. You're separate for your thought.
Okay. And I would really like to raise, I don't know if we're going to have time, but I'd really like to hear what Mike Alderman, Alderman Dale had to say. I, I think they are as much important as the rest of us. But we're going to go into the workshop right now and we're going to stay up here for the workshop. You're going to hear us discuss how we think, what we think, and that's important for you to know that. You should know how, why we take certain things that we do and you don't have to depend on Facebook and, and other things that are, put a spin to it. Great goodness for John, who keeps that down because he, he records it and people can see it. So these are going to be issues that we'll be talking about that really are important. So A, discuss and consider issues relating to the potential operation of an all-abilities playground as a public park. Amber?
Thank you. So, um, put this on the workshop to talk. We've actually visited with Selayo ISD, um, had some good news from the school district about finding the permanent site and permanent home for this playground. And instead of me doing all the talking, I'm going to fill in from our side of what that means to us, but I was going to ask if Tiffany could please come up and talk a little bit, brief us on the playground, where we are on it, and kind of the, the long and short of what we told the school as far as, um, you know, timelines and purpose and those kind of things, and just give us a couple of minutes if you have time. Sorry if I know you've got to get out of here pretty quickly, so.
It's good to see you again. You're always working, whether it be with downtown.
I'm always up to something. Yes. Yeah, so like Amber said, um, we met with, uh, the school board at their meeting on Monday evening and we'd had, we'd had meetings with Dr. Nervotny across the last 18 months, maybe longer, um, um, and with Mike Brooks. We finally were able to meet with the entire school board on Monday evening and presented our drafts, and I want to highlight that they're very much drafts. They will be changed, they will be tweaked, we will be getting feedback, but they did agree to hold the land for us for at least two years, um, a minimum of two years, until we have the entire plan and all of the funds raised. We are just now officially this week launching our playground campaign and there have been many questions from, um, supporters and potential supporters and whatnot, um, regarding, you know, whether or not we would consider Pace Park. And of course, it was our first option. I mean, why wouldn't it be? It's the Vista, it's the heartbeat, it's the centerpiece to so much that Selayo is and stands for and offers. And, um, so many of my childhood memories are there and pretty much the same playground's still there and that tells you. So that said, I'll let Amber actually highlight why, like all of the ins and outs as to why Pace Park is not the number one choice for this all-abilities, all-inclusive playground. And it's mostly about footprint and sewage lines and electrical lines and that kind of thing and parking. But that's, well, before she goes there, I'd like to also say, that's not to say that we don't anticipate or hope and dream and plan to, at some point, support the playground once at Pace Park in addition to building the park project here behind the civic center. We do. We hope to install some sort of vignette or some way to bolster Pace Park in any way that we, that we possibly can after we've completed phase one, um, here by the civic center. Anything else you want to add to that, Amber? I think, yeah. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I may be tapping into you again in just a second, but kind of to bring you guys on, um, up to speed. So we did talk to the board. We looked at the initial, at, at both sites. We looked at Pace Park, we looked at the site at the civic center, which is just, um, south of where the community garden is placed. So it would be between the, the, um, the community garden and the little baseball field that's sitting there. The, um, the school board unanimously voted to, uh, hold that, like she said, for two years so that we could get the, um, the money raised to actually start the site prep, but they, um, were very positive and wanted, very much wanted the playground to be there. Um, the, I think that pretty much the exact motion was they were going to hold that for two years, um, pending negotiations with the village on liability and things like that. So they kind of basically asked for the village to go in with them and negotiate on exactly what the village would be responsible for and what, um, the school district would be responsible for and what Serena Fest and Variety Text would be responsible for. And the reason that we had pretty much ruled out Pace Park, um, so the way that the utility lines are aerially run, um, they run right across the playground. And to be able to completely utilize that site, we would have to completely level the playground. So until it was built back up, there would be no playground in the village. Um, also, all of the utility lines would have to be buried because, um, the vertical construction, because it is all abilities, um, it actually makes the whole structure a little bit taller and it makes it a little bit wider and it wouldn't fit underneath that, the, the current, um, overhead wires. So burying that, completely re-leveling the site, we have to relocate the lateral lines of the septic system, um, and there are some water lines, some other lines that are kind of buried in the area. All that said, the site prep would be approximately $100,000. We can almost build the first phase of the playground for $100,000. So, um, we're looking at almost doubling our costs. So that was the, the biggest issue. Get the big, the other issue was parking. If, um, we were to build parking on that site, the way that the parking is currently configured, um, all of the parking at the top would have to be converted to handicap accessible parking only, which means that no one could park on the top level of Pace Park. Every person that did not have handicap license plates, um, would have to park down at the bottom. So we didn't really want to do that either because that would take the access for, um, the, the neurotypical children that were coming to play on the playground. So, um, the site at the, at the school office is at Civic Center completely leveled, so it's completely ready to go. And there's plenty of parking to be, um, completed right there with really not taking any of the additional parking that's currently at the school. So, um, that's kind of what we were looking at for that aspect. In terms of, um, maintenance, we did talk to Don ahead of time, we talked to the school ahead of time as well. It looks like the cost, um, the maintenance cost will be relatively low, maybe more maintaining the lawn space around it, um, because that playground will come with a warranty. So, um, they, and the, the warranty is typically pretty long on the working parts. And so there wouldn't be any kind of maintenance at the very beginning. Insurance costs are nominal because when you're looking at adding one playground structure and some parking to our, our current insurance, it's just really nothing. Um, the, uh, the rest of it's really kind of, I guess, up in the air. We're looking at potential, uh, investors right now to, uh, the, the bigger investors. We, of course, appreciate the $15, $100 checks and they, they get us where we, we're heading in the right direction, but we need some larger investors to be able to really make this work. So that's kind of what she's talking about kicking off that campaign. Um, with the long-term maintenance, um, that this, this will be, uh, done in phases. So phase one would be a complete playground structure for kids to start playing on. Um, phase two maybe, um, would add, we were talking about, additional features and a restroom facility there on site. Phase three may be redoing, there's a, a baseball field there into a Field of Dreams. There's a lot of options, but the festival and, um, Serena Fest, in general, all of the, the funds, we're, we're planning on creating that as a, that's a long-term maintenance. So the maintenance, any maintenance cost would, would be pulled out of that fund. And then as we have more money to do the additional phases, we would hopefully get to Pace Park, add some also inclusive structures there at that park and help do updates at Pace Park as well. We really want this to be kind of a, a community project, but also a county, you know, a central Texas regional playground, because this doesn't exist at a lot of places. So you're going to have families, not from just Selayo, that are coming to utilize this on a very regular basis. You're going to have therapists that are, um, coming into town to use this playground. You have a lot of people that are coming in to really, um, take advantage of something that doesn't exist in very many places. And so, um, that's why we want to continue to raise money for this project and just really expand it down, down Main Street and make it bigger and bigger and bigger. I think that's it.
I think the only other thing I wanted to say is we, we, not only do we very much and first and foremost want to be intentional and as thoughtful, um, as we can possibly be in, in the building and the structure and the planning of the playground, but also ensuring that it will be as beautiful as Selayo deserves and making all of the accent pieces, um, locally made by local artisans so that when you pull up to this place, it is not just a thing of inclusivity, which is in itself beautiful, but it is a thing of inspiration artistically in Selayo's, in Selayo's manner and way.
Yes, and we've looked at colors too. You're not going to see some carousel colored thing behind the civic center. We want it very much to blend in, look natural, be natural with the surroundings and be a therapeutic environment. So a lot of people are concerned that we're going to have things like red and purple and yellow and green and orange and stuck right there and it's not going to, um, really go with the historic district kind of ideas. Of course, this will definitely be run through all the appropriate channels and, um, the historic district will definitely play a big part in the design. Once we get a final design that we can run, start running through the different groups that really need to, to sign off on this, but I just want people to know ahead of time that it is supposed to be a therapeutic environment and soft colors and blending in where you're not going to see some monstrosity from Main Street.
Well, I got one thing along this, Amber. I think this is great. Of all the doom and gloom for tonight, this is a fresh air. Nice thing that could come to Selayo and, and be a great thing for people. Well done. I, I support this. This is nice. We don't agree on a lot of things, but this, this is pretty good. It's a new day.
Well, Amber, I, I will say that I know this dream has been around for a couple of years, two or three years. Number one, would y'all be willing to make this budget to show how much money it's going to take to build it?
We have a.
Your concept plan? And can you get us a picture of it so that we can make it live in our minds?
Yes, we have it and I really should have had the foresight to print those out, but I didn't.
We'll make sure you get them very soon.
Yes, I can email those to Don and, and we can send them all to everyone's emails because the, the artist renditions are amazing and it, we're not stuck to a specific design because, um, as we talk to therapists and doctors and all these different people that are putting ideas into our head of what the needs are of some of these kids, some of those pieces may change a little bit, but the overall concept of how we want to bring Selayo into the playground is, um, is what we're trying to accomplish. So, but we do have some artist renditions that are beautiful.
I just Googled one of them. They, they look pretty cool. They do. Like a little city.
I know that.
Like Legoland or something.
We raised our granddaughter and she was totally deaf. It was hard sometimes because we couldn't let Alex do things because there was no place to do them. She couldn't hear the cars coming, she couldn't hear anything. So firsthand experience, I think that's great. So if it's okay with the alderman that's here, I would like to ask you, bring forth the plan. Let us see it. Let us see the picture of it and let's go forward.
Absolutely. We'll get those too.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
John, you agree with that?
Absolutely.
Amber, do you agree with that?
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Now that we're going to make that dream a reality.
That's right. Now, now the real work begins.
And I know if anybody can do it, these two right here can do it. Okay, thank you.
I made a comment at the school board meeting. I said, even if it's my ghost haunting Selayo raising funds, we're going to get this thing built. But I really do think now that we have the land agreement, or at least the two-year hold, um, and we feel confident that we can release now the venue, we can really, before we couldn't, um, because there were a lot of discussions that needed to be had. So we're excited and thank you for your support. We're going to need every ounce of support from this community for it. It'll be a gift to Selayo and a legacy for Bell County. So thank you.
This is what makes Selayo special.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Good. Good.
Okay, all right, what a, what an evening this has been, we've got one more. Discuss and consider issues relating to the potential future relocation of the municipal building. Once again, that's going to be me who's gonna be talking about this. Why do we need to relocate? How do we pay for it? Well, when you look at what we have here, it works. We need in here, it's cool, it's nice, not big. Our police department is right on down over there. We have a couple of sheds over here. Why would you wanna move? Part of being what and who Selayo is, is that you go to one place, you bring all your people together, your courts, your police department, your constable, maybe even someday a place where you can go and buy license plates or something like that, where your health offices that will be able to contain what you want, you, the public, and what we need as far as adding to our staff. And yes, we can make ten or fifteen years from now, we can do that. Our, one thing that we can do is to begin looking for a place and finding out what this property is worth that we sit on. And who knows, maybe if we sold it, we could afford to buy something, I'm just gonna throw this one out, I haven't talked to anyone about it, and maybe I better not.
I wouldn't identify any specific.
Yeah, I know, I'm not gonna do that. But it would put us somewhere where we could say this is not only our municipal building, this is where we are, and are planning and making dreams come true, and running Selayo. So, it's only a workshop, Adam, I'll let you guys talk about it.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at, Mr. Mayor, to do something like this?
Pardon?
How far down the road are we looking at to do something like this?
Well, we'd have to find the property first for me to be able to answer that question, it could be five years before we ever find anything, or ten years. But I think it has to be put before, so that we can at least start looking and seeing, and if it's not a good idea, it's not a good idea, then that's fine too. So I'll let you speak.
I like the idea of finding a place not right on the highway, where, you know, we can focus on being closer to Main Street maybe. I would feel more confident about getting an actual estimate of what this would be worth, should it be deemed commercial. Because I honestly don't think that this, somebody's gonna want the building, I mean, they're going to obviously level everything and build something here, and so what is this worth on the market? If, you know, to, to kind of figure out what we have to play with, we may have to add a little bit of money to it, but I'd like to think that we're making enough money here, where we could do something comparable somewhere else for, to say, close to the same amount of money. And also, not only that, but I know that, you know, Don, you can be in discussions with some businesses, and there wouldn't be anything necessarily written in stone, but get a good idea that somebody's wanting this place before we decide to go buy something else, and then, you know, I mean, it may not be sold, but it's gonna be close to a deal before we decide to leave, just get some ideas of who would want this, because I know it's kind of long and skinny, it's an odd property, so.
Other discussion, please?
Here, I, for my sense in and I think regionalization of government is always the most efficient approach. I think accessibility to government is always the most efficient approach. Nothing critical of the civic center, but I have concerns about accessibility of that building every time I walk in. It's a great building, it's a very historic building. I don't know the county's position, and what their resources are like, and what their long-term facilities, master plan may be, as far as looking at precinct offices and things along those lines, but you know, I, I think Amber's dead right, I think it's important to get off Main Street, we go up front of the road and get on the Main Street or in another area that's, that's more Selayo. You know, I just think that whatever we do, we shouldn't discount discussions with potentially the county and the state about regionalization. Trying to make it to the point where you create a government center, for lack of a better phrase, as opposed to, the service is all government for your community, not just two or three, you know? And, and don't discount the state in that involvement, and quite frankly, don't discount the federal government in that involvement, from a standpoint, USDA offices, those types of things. There are a lot of, there are a lot of good things you can do in, in setting up regional government centers. Setting it up from a standpoint of planning for not just what we need in the next three, five years, just looking at potential growth in five to ten years, you know, something along those lines, but just something to think about, I mean, you know, you've got a lot of development that's taking place in this community, and you've got the opportunity to seriously deal with developers, as far as looking at sites, property donations, and things like that. You know, key is just finding something that's visible, accessible, and serviceable for many years to come, that you can grow in and, and not piss yourself off at the beginning, that's a lot of times that we make mistakes doing at the beginning of the facility planning, as we think about only that which we need for the next twenty-four months, not covering the service in ten years.
So, are we in agreement, and really, I'd like to get Michael and Alderman Bill involved in this also, are we in agreement that we can go ahead and begin to do some of the things that Don has suggested, and just see if we can even do this for the future?
I think we definitely need to start the talks.
Well, folks, that's all I have on that one, and we're getting close to the end. I know it's been a shock treatment to you. Maybe not, it sure was to me when I looked at the stuff. There's no other way we can do business, there's nothing transparent about this, this is your community. So if you've got thoughts, there's your Alderman, and Alder Lady. Talk to them. Help us make the right decision. No spin, just straight talk, honest, transparent, straight talk, and we're gonna do the same to you, just like we did tonight. I wanna thank you for being attentive, and I've watched you as I've spoken. And you've taken what we have said to heart, whether you agree with it or not, you have been very attentive to what we were saying. I wanna thank you for that. Frank, anything you wanna say, Mr.?
I was just gonna add that I think it's prudent that we start looking at this, and I think from a federal all the way down to the local level for a facility that could house something, and also maybe include our tourism and our chair of congressmen in the building, all in one location.
Yeah, so that, I didn't even think about that, that's cool.
And the EDC.
And the Starbucks.
Well, do we have a review too, would you like to make a comment, can you add anything you want?
I, I just think the, the relocation is, is, is a good move, we need to consolidate, I'm all for pushing forward with it, especially when you get state federal grants to help, that would be fantastic. I really do, I mean, it's, it's part of growth, you know, if we're growing, we're growing, if we're not, we're not.
Ms. Amber?
Agreed.
I'll entertain a motion for, for German.
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second, second, second.
Thank you for your patience and for your understanding.